And we will start.
And. And to the regalities which is giving. On the nation. In this fall, looks like your team is just for all.
And so have everyone here tonight, so we have a forum. And we will move right into the superintendent awards.
Okay, I'm super intended academic achievement awards. The first student will be acknowledging and recognizing tonight's. Dakota Lamar Childs, even that's like the alternative high school.
Right.
It is our honor to announce the recipient of this month's superintendent award Dakota Lamar Childs. Dakota is the son of Michelle Lamar. Dakota started at Dillard Alternative High School at the beginning of this school year and quickly stood out as staff as a student who would be a positive addition to the student body. He was selected to receive the award because he is such a positive role model at the school. His cheerful nature, positive attitude, and confident smile brighten the day for all who have the pleasure of interacting with him and serving as a reminder to his peers. That no matter what is going on, one can retain a positive attitude and look for the good in each day. Dakota, the shining example of cheerful perseverance. No matter the challenge, he approaches this work with unwavering persistence and a commitment to progress that is truly inspiring. One of those difficulties happens every day when he attends math class. Where Dakota cheerfully and regularly reviews the steps required for solving higher level mathematical problems. Despite his own struggle with math, he mounted the concept of the day. He will use his own words to help ensure his friends understand it too. In addition to helping his friends in math, Dakota is helpful to his peers when attending horticulture and landscaping class. Working outside and with landscaping equipment is where Dakota is most comfortable. And his peers report that he does not hesitate to jump in and offer instruction when he can see one of them struggling. Dakota is truly an inspiration to the students and staff at Dillard Alternative High School because of his positive and helpful attitude, his ever-present smile and cheerfulness. Congratulations Dakota and thank you for meeting you.
This is middle school. I'll let them introduce their student.
Thanks, Mr. Wilson. Would enjoy to invite Amelia up. Thank you. Her parents for being here to welcome her. Mr. Solerzano is here to present tonight. Who's having come on the front?
So it is a pleasure that we announced that Amelia Oily House has been selected at Winston Middle School's January 2025 Superintendent's Award recipient. Amelia is the daughter of Bridgette and Stephen Boilingus. Amelia embodies the qualities that we value most in our students. Dedication, respect, and the positive attitude that inspires everyone around her. Amelia's hard work and resilience are true and remarkable. She consistently approaches challenges with determination and ensures that her assignments are completed not only on time, but at the highest standard. The commit, ah, sorry, her commitment to excellence sets a powerful example for her peers. In addition to her academic achievements, Amelia is an absolute joy to have in class. Her polite and respectful demeanor creates a welcoming atmosphere for her classmates and teachers alike. Amelia's character also reflects our school's core goals. She shows respect through kindness to others and her thoughtful interactions with teachers and students. She encourages everyone by maintaining a positive outlook and supporting her classmates in group settings. She takes responsibly, she takes responsibility by managing her workload with care and diligence, never hesitating to seek help when needed. Finally, she prioritizes safety by making thoughtful choices that contribute to a harmonious learning environment. Amelia exemplifies the quality of a model student and stands as a shining example of what it means to be a warrior. We are incredibly proud of her accomplishments and the positive impact she has on our school community. Thank you, Amelia. You make Winston Middle School such a great place to be.
Um, school board appreciation.
School board appreciation. You offer your gifts. Looks like we have lots of good stuff up here for everybody. Trying not to get into the cookies before the meeting's over.
Speak to them and what they're doing. But I want to start just by thanking the board. And we do have a proclamation from the office of the governor. I'm not going to read the whole thing. It's in the board packet. I do want to read a couple, though. Whereas locally elected boards fulfill leadership roles and serve as the conduit through which teachers, parents, businesses, and communities demonstrate the care, creativity, and support that leads to an achievement. Thank you. And whereas board members build a framework that makes it possible for educational organizations to teach Oregon's children. Thank you. And whereas we thank the committed community members who serve on the boards of Oregon's 197 school districts, 19 education service districts, and 17 community colleges, and seven public universities for their dedication to the education needs of Oregonians. Thank you. Building principal, if you want to talk about what?
My, my, we're right here in the front row. Yeah, go ahead. Do you have this high school?
Yeah. On behalf of associate student body of Douglas High School. Thank you for all that you do for us and our community. Please enjoy the chocolate chip sticker noodle and over risen cookies provided by Pro Start Class.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No one wants to go next?
Thanks, on behalf of the middle school. I think you'll find there a handmade card by our staff and inside that a leather keychain made by our art kids on their engravers. Thank you so much for all you do.
Um, thank you from Rockaway. We have the different projects around. Lots of hand contests we can see that. What we do best, I think, sometimes is make our presence known with our little hands all over. Our DLC students are represented first graders and second graders. And then you have a tasty treat that I handled with much care to make sure I got here and presented appropriately from our first grade teacher team. So please enjoy. It is a refrigerated item, so I have kept it cold all day.
Thank you.
And thank you so much from Looking Glass. We presented you with some swag. There's a Looking Glass hat there in front of you. Feel free to try colors if you want to. And I do have more of all the colors if you want to switch. And then there's also a banner over here made by our kiddos. And I got to tell you this hilarious story. So some second grade, second graders were up there signing it and they said, so one of them said, so who are these people? What, what are we doing here? And so I'm explaining all these great things you guys have done in this and that and outdoor school and all these wonderful things. And then another group of kiddos comes up to take their turn to sign. And one of them says, why are we signing this? And the kiddo that I had just explained all that to said, they're the ones that can fire Mrs. L. Thank you so much.
The government also appreciates you guys. And those baskets are put together by the third grade team. And then there's some posters up there in the front. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Um, we don't want the student report tonight because she is wrestling. So we'll do a short intermission now for anybody that doesn't want to stay for the regular school board meeting. And thank you all.
And thanks for doing that. Mr. Solerzano, the seventh grade teacher. Tomorrow, she's supposed to come down to me and help me design a presentation to go on. But she gets to do all that around it. See, I told her that she came a little bit. Maybe like that was a little bit too much. There's never too much. It's your kind of average in the stories.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So we'll move right back into number eight. We'll start with our audit presentation by Thank You Route. Thank you, David Davidson.
Involved in the Winston Dillard School District basic financial statements for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. The audit was conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States as well as the applicable government auditing standards. An audit provides you with reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free and materially safe. Internal controls are examined and tested in conjunction with audit testing. And we found no issues in that area, which is great. Auditors are also watching out for signs of fraud. None were identified. No internal control or fraud issues were identified during the audit. Based on our audit, we've given Winston Dillard School District an unmodified opinion, which means you had a clean audit. That is, I mean, there isn't anything that we didn't find, but we spent over $300 looking and we found nothing. So some major numbers from your financials. Your government-wide ending net position this last year went from 34.9 million down to 34.3 million. So reduction of 530,000 for the year. And we expected to see this in all of the schools, a reduction, because all of the ESAR funds were starting to line off. So none of this is surprising. The governmental fund ending balance went from 8,200,000 to 7,100,000, a reduction of 1.1 million dollars. Cash and investments is still pretty strong. It went from 9 million to 7.9 million, a reduction of 1.1 million. In the revenue area. This is where you really see the reduction of the ESAR. The overall revenues went from 26.5 million to 24.5 million, a reduction of 1.9 million for the year. Now that 24.5 million that was received for the year, a majority of that, 51%, 12,636,000 comes from state school funding. And the federal funding for the year was 2,264,000. And that is down from last year's 5,327,000. So that's where you could see the reduction in the ESAR funding. Expenditures overall, government-wide, went from 28,300,000 to 25,689,000, a reduction of 2,692,000. Your liabilities for the year ended up at 25,838,000. Of that, the bond liabilities are down to 18.7 million. And your first uncredit liability is still looking really good. It's at 995,000, which is much better than most of the districts we've dealt with. So it's looking really, really good.
Superintendent Report.
Okay. Enrollment order. So this isn't real super accurate because it was 1-3. And when this number was pulled, that we were down nine students from the 12-6 last year. So I anticipate we have some enrollment coming in this week. And so we'll keep a close eye on our enrollment numbers for the February 12th board meeting. Also added the At-A-Glance district profiles. The board packet for you. So just give you some general information district-wide and then by building as well. Pretty. Yeah, I think that was probably in 23-24 school year. You know, regular attenders, I'll speak to that here in a second, but our regular attendance rate is going up. So attendance is improving. And that's been an initiative for the district for a while. On track to graduate, going up, high school success. High school doing a big job up there with their four-year, five-year cohorts. On track to graduate, ninth grade on track to graduating. So a lot of positives. But they're all. Every school, the district, and then every school's At-A-Glance is in there. So if you want to look at class size, regular attenders, ELA, math and science, and then other. It depends on what grade level it is. There's good information there. The cohort attendance data is, so I'm not sure how many there are. There's 10, 12 districts there. And then Winston Dillard out of those, so is it an attendance cohort. Banks, Philip Beaverton, Burn River, Corvallis, all of those schools. We had the highest change from 22 to 23 to 23-24 last year. So the percent of students that were clinically absent, we actually improved 10%, 10.6% in the district. So great job, building leaders and teachers and staff and. And Mrs. Kellison as well. The attendance, you know, the attendance policies and books that were created to help improve this were implemented as well. And then the ODE, there's also a document in there, the ODE grad rates. The four-year cohort rate, five-year, they're all the way up from, so at Winston Dillard, that's the the alternative high school and the high school combined for four-year cohort rates went up like 13%. 16, 9.42 to 82.20. The five-year went up 6%. And then the actual just grad, just sheer graduation rate went up 12% to 84.62%. So.
Nice and.
Kudos, high school. Staff.
I don't have anything new for the directors report. We'll move on to items of discussion. 11A, 2025 school board elections. Position number two, held by myself, Jas McGeire. Position number three, held by Bob Shigley. And position number four, held by Jeremy Mitchell, will expire June 30th of 2025. Notice will go out in February and elections will be held in May. Candidate filing date is February 8th, 2025 through March 2025. If you would like to seek reelection, you must refile the candidate filing form before the deadline. Um, 11B, OSBA policy updates. OSBA has made quite a few changes in policies. Since I just got it, we'll provide updates at the February meeting.
I'm speaking. AI, artificial intelligence is one. So there's a lot of, a lot of things that are. This new policy updates from OSBA will, will have quite a few additional policies to, for the board and review for first reading in February, which will include, you know, things such as artificial intelligence. Build trip request, there are a couple on there. Coming back from the break was two minutes.
12, adoption of the agenda. Put it over with me. Do you have any motion?
Move Winston Dillard. Board. Move Winston Dillard School District Board of Directors approve the consent statement presented. Second.
Okay, motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, 13, action items. 115A is from 25 and 26 budget calendars, second reading.
I'm with Winston Dillard School District Board of Directors. Prove the 2025-26 budget calendar development. Second.
Okay, motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And 13B, Winston Dillard post-prominent selection and use of adopted instructional materials to help.
Yeah, the health text about adoption. We were requesting to postpone that until the 25-26 school year to be used in the beginning of the 26-27 school year. And. Generally, the adoption process, you know, begins in November. And due to extenuating circumstances, health specifically, we would like some more time with our, our new leadership team just to look at where we're at. It was adopted seven years ago, and so it's not like we're, you know, we'll have to submit a request to ODE to postpone that. And they'll ask us all the questions like, you know, what are we using now and how are we meeting the standards? And so we'll have to complete all that. But I think it's beneficial with the change in leadership for us to take some time administratively to look into the health curriculum and make sure that we're adopting health-appropriate curriculum for our community.
I move the Winston Dillard School District Board of Directors to approve postponement of selection and use of adopted health curriculum until 2025-26 school year.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Anybody signed up to see? Did you see? Okay, we're the Gonna Be Order. Do you want to start?
Yeah, I was gonna have Jeremiah do it tonight. Jeremiah do some self tonight. Yeah, I hardly thought I was gonna do this, so.
This is our new pathetic, right?
Yeah.
Jeremiah Robbins.
Yeah.
Excited, Jeremiah.
No, honored to be back and with the team. Obviously, a new role for me, but very excited about it. Definitely a part, be a part of this with everybody. And we've got a bright vision of what we want our student athletes to look like. So I'm building right in with Craig and Jeff and yeah, hit the ground running. So I'm excited. A lot of work to do, but thank you.
Welcome. Yeah, any of you guys are excited here in a couple of weekends, next weekend, we're having a big dance up there. We need some cappone, so if any of you guys up there are looking to come out to a winner dance, you're welcome to come out and help out. And so, yeah, the kids have been getting ready for that. Been a while since we had, it's not a formal, it's a, they call it a city office. And yeah, dance, so it's, that's the new and fun things coming up in high school. So that's about all we have going right now. We're just getting ready to end the semester.
We're going, okay. Um, we are getting ready as for semester coming to end, but to do our winter benchmark assessments that we do for reading and math. So there are two reading and a math assessment that happens. Teachers do a super great job preparing kids for that. Showing the importance, but not stressing them out too much that, you know, they are reluctant to do their best. But kind of happens as a well-oiled machine, so it's really great. Try to get it done as easily as possible without interrupting too much instruction. As we know, testing is great information for us, but our time in teacher's teaching is super important still. Uh, we have plans to use that information later on in the month to help our instruction based on where our students are. Uh, we, I talked with you last time about our kinder intervention class that continues to go well. We're already seeing some progress and improvement in some of our students, so that's great. And my teacher came back ready to go after break too, so that's awesome. We are in the middle of doing rules orientation review. So we go around the cafeteria, bathrooms, those kind of high-traffic areas of playground and review our expectations for students. As you noticed in our packet, we, I was out of dean of students here for a bit, but the good news and what I wanted to share is I've been able to have Sherry Fromdall come back and work a few days a week to help support teachers and students at Rockaway. So very excited to have her come join us. We didn't know she's been in that role before, quite a few years ago. Long time Winston Dillard employee, so I'm excited to have her. Before the break on Thursday, we had a fire alarm. It was not a drill. But I just wanted to give kudos to the Rockaway staff. It wasn't raining, so that was amazing. We had just done a drill, so they did awesome. And that was very helpful for me to see how we might react at night and early in the morning to something not planned with our little kids, preschoolers and everything. We were able to quickly account for all of our staff and students. I also want to thank the Winston Dillard Police Department. They were very prompt in coming to campus and contacting me. Making sure that it wasn't just a little one pull on the alarm, that we really did need to check that out. And then also Shelby came right away and was able to find the faulty sensor and get that replaced long before the end of the school day. So I was very happy about that. And we're working on that fencing that you guys approved and we're giving new playground shifts. You have an empty wear barrel and shovel that you need to be spread, but we have a plan for that. And the nice weather next week will help. Thank you guys again, and you are so greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
McCaffrey just was rekeyed over the break, which we had been waiting for for quite a while. So that was done and it's been nice and we'd have a lot less keys to use. We, as soon as we got back, the grade-level teams started diving into some iReady data and just looking at reviewing of how the kids did in the fall, because we have that coming up starting next week. And so we'll be doing that again. And all the teachers made posters of their data and they're going to be, they have a visual to look at and to move on as the kids progress, which is going to be exciting. And it's, it's fun to actually spin the cards and hit as well and to move them up the ladder, I guess. We have literature circles happening that Marina Robbins is doing. And she takes kids into the library, like her fourth and fifth grade groups. And that's going really well, and I'm excited to see what kind of progress our kids are going to have with that higher level thinking when they're doing novel studies. We are down with BBS, but we need a child development specialist. So if you guys know anybody who is interested, that is posted. Yeah, and then lastly, I just want to kind of mention our IAs and how well they've been doing actually on the playground. We've been talking about having a supervision training with PACE. And I was just, it just reminded me of how well they're actually supervising our kids. We've got a lot less incidents on the playground. We have more staff out there to monitoring. And when I'm looking out there, they're, they're moving and they're watching and they're communicating really well on the radios. And it's, it's nice to see it, and I feel like our kids are really well cared for when they're out there, so. Okay.
Thank you. Emily, I actually feel like going forward, I just want to say ditto to a lot of that. So before break, our Christmas play went off without a hitch. And the aliens were able to save Christmas and everything ended splendid. And it was actually really great. At the, the last song of our Christmas program, it, the sound system don't cut out. And it stopped working mid-song. And the adults all went, wah, it's ruined! But the kids did fabulous. They kept singing, they kept clapping, they finished the entire thing. Everybody was crying because they did such a fabulous job, even though the sound system went out. So it went off without a hitch and it was really fun. We had. It was standing room only, like everywhere. There, people were standing everywhere. So it was very well attended. And I also want to give a huge. Um, I also want to give a huge shout out to some of the organizations in the Looking Glass community. The Looking Glass Church, Grange, and Fire Department all worked together um to adopt nine families for Christmas. And they were able to, to give those families with gifts, not only for the kiddos that we had, but also if they had kiddos at the middle school, high school, graduated kiddos, grandparents in the home, parents. And they really kind of put their arms around the entire family. Um, so that was really nice to do, and all of the families were very appreciative and a lot of kiddos came wearing a lot of the things that, that they were gifted. That was really great to see. And as far as start back, we've had a great first couple of days. And we are also gearing up to benchmark next week, and you know me, I'm always in for a good game and celebration. Um, so we are doing Battle of the Benchmarks next week, and everybody has been put into five different color teams. And they're going to be battling to see which team can show the most growth in all the different assessments. And then all the teams will get to pick different parties, from skate parties to river float parties um once, but they've completed all the assessments. So it's just giving them a little bit of extra incentive. They all have little flags that they get to wave all week and we'll announce kiddos that do um, you know, really exceptionally well. So-and-so went up twenty points on iReady. Red team, get your flags out and start waving it, and they'll all get to get their flag out and celebrate their team, so. We're gonna try and make these assessments as fun as possible.
Mm-hmm. I think that's a great idea. We're gonna steal that. Our kids are super excited to be back in school after what seemed like a very long Christmas break. And uh, I'm not, I think the teachers were glad for the long break, but the, the kids are particularly super heck glad to be back. We are also gearing up for our winter assessment season. We, we do assessments, two different kinds of uh devil's assessments as oral reading fluency as well as comprehension. And then each of our core subjects, math, science, language, art, social studies, and E, all do their own benchmarks, so the teachers are starting to get those planned. We'll probably not do those until the beginning of the semester. Um, this Friday, we're going to be in our fourth session of what's called Psyop Training. A Psyop Training is stands for Shelter Instructional Observational Protocol. I don't know what it means either, but this is what it is. It's one of the best trainings I ever did as a teacher. Um, it's, it's a really hands-on way to help students learn vocabulary. As we've seen an increase in English language learners in the school, it's a a training that our teachers really thought that they could use to help them. And it's, you know, we don't, while we, we have, we see an increase of English language learners, we have a lot of students who don't have a rich vocabulary at home. And so it helps them pick up um meaningful academic vocabulary as well. Because when we start getting into middle school, it's, it's amazing how many five-letter words and a five-letter, did I say letter? Five-syllable words and six-syllable words there are in, in seventh grade science. It's like the kids, you know, it's, it's deer in the head like when they first come in, so it's important to start learning how to use academic vocabulary. It's a, a good thing to work on. Um, I'd like Michelle to share a couple of things about winter athletics. Been a good season, but.
Well, the boys' basketball teams didn't do quite so well. Um, our wrestling team did amazing at districts. Both the boys and the girls got second place overall. We had several first-place finishes, individual finishes. Um, this year we had an amazing turnout of the number of athletes that wanted to wrestle, especially an increase in the number of girls, so um I think that we consistently had fifteen female wrestlers, uh, and I anticipate that to continue on next year, so I'm really happy about that. Um, and then we are getting, getting started with our girls' wrestling, our girls' uh basketball season. Uh, we're having tryouts this week. We had a great number of girls come out. I think there were thirty-five of them on the first day, and I think thirty-two on the second day. Um, so we have a, a lot of kids that are interested in staying active and staying involved in, in activities at school.
Are you keeping that many kids?
The plan is to keep as many as we can, as many as want to. Uh, well, we have twenty-eight uniforms. And uh, we are offering up the opportunity for girls who don't make the, like, say, like, starting lineup to um take a secondary role as a team manager or a, a cut, continue to come to practice and build their skills. Uh, with the potential to later in the season, maybe get some playing time as well. That usually does happen when they aren't, um, they don't make it to the starting lineup. Um, there tends to be, you know, kids who are sick or ineligible for academics, and so the, they fill in those those spots too and get some playing time. We haven't had any kids not be able to play yet.
Much. Um, with that, I will call meeting adjourned. Our next meeting, um, executive session is February twelfth at six, and regular session is February twelfth at seven.